...affordable housing in California.
Everyone should have a roof, some kind of roof over their head. And certainly what we know is that Californians, people who are born here, are having to leave their home state because they can't afford to rent or to buy a home.
So California Assembly Speaker Tony Atkins recently gathered with state and city officials downtown to announce a plan that would create a permanent source of funding for affordable housing. The proposed legislation is part of a broader package that would boost the state's low-income housing tax credit by 300 million.
This bill package will send a loud message to all Californians that housing help is on its way.
The proposal would charge a $75 fee for real estate transactions, such as when businesses buy properties or homeowners refinance their homes. But folks buying a home would not be charged. Atkins says the plan would raise a few hundred million dollars, which would be used to develop more apartments for low and moderate income Californians. Mayor Eric Garcetti said that local leaders should equal the state's efforts to improve the quality of life for all Californians.
We have not built 100,000 units of housing that we should have over the last decade. And I pledge to do that here in Los Angeles by 2021. To accommodate not just population growth, but to ensure that people have humane housing that they can live in at an affordable price.
A public policy report shows that about 36% of homeowners and nearly half of renters spend more than a third of their income on housing, a cycle officials hope to break for good. I'm Yana K. for LA this week.
Southern California routinely ranks among the least affordable housing markets in the nation. Well, the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority has announced a new CEO, Philip Washington. And that's our This Week in Tweets. Back in January, current Metro CEO Art Leahy announced he would be stepping down after six years on the job overseeing a very prolific construction period in the agency's history. In this past week, LA Mayor and Metro Chairman Eric Garcetti introduced Philip Washington as the new CEO of Metro. At Metro Los Angeles shared a few photos of Washington at a news conference and tweeting, "New CEO Philip Washington will start no later than May 29th." One of his priorities, to ride system and get to know Metro on all levels. And at LA Mayor's Office tweeted, "Phil Washington, newly confirmed CEO of Metro, has a track record of delivering major projects on time and under budget. #BackToBasics." Washington comes to Metro from Denver's Regional Transportation District, where he has been CEO since 2009. From keeping the theater alive to keeping productions here in Los Angeles, Rasha Goel has more on how the city is supporting those working and bearing aspects of the entertainment industry.
Actor Tim Robbins joined other artists to express their concern over a proposed plan by the Actors Equity Association, which guarantees stage actors and stage managers a salary based on the minimum wage. Robbins is among the many who don't support it because they say it may force small theaters to shut down.
And that's what we're here to preserve. The ability for us as actors to be able to test ourselves, to be able to not always operate in a commercial mode.
Currently, performers receive a stipend which can be as little as $7 a performance. Those in the West Coast theater scene say, "With more pay for the actors, there would be a drastic reduction in the number and quality of local theater."
We have a lot of wonderful laurels to our history at this company, as do each and every one of these theaters up and down this street. None of that would be possible if we had to pay this minimum wage for rehearsal time to actors, which at the same time offers us no protection that that actor is going to stay with the run of the show.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell showed his support, opposing the minimum wage requirement for those who work in the theater.
Small theater isn't just about artistic expression. It's also good for the Los Angeles economy.
Mayor Eric Garcetti also recently spoke about boosting the local economy by keeping production jobs local by tripling the state's film tax credit.
If you do the math, about $6 billion worth of leveraged production over the next five years, the bulk of which will be here in Southern California, will come back to the state.
The easier that we can make it for production to happen here, the more jobs are going to be created, the more money is going to come into our local economy.
Whether it's keeping TV and film production here in the city to preserve middle-class jobs, or keeping small theaters open to keep artistic expression alive, the city continues to show its support for its signature industry. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Councilman Mitch O'Farrell also recently won unanimous support in City Hall to designate Santa Monica Boulevard at Wilcox as Hollywood Theater Row. There is an app for just about everything, and now there's one that could help save lives, Yana K. reports.
These students at Woodrow Wilson High School are learning Hands-Only CPR, a skill that officials say when used in conjunction with a new app called PulsePoint can help save lives.
If somebody had sudden cardiac arrest, and studies show that most people who have sudden cardiac arrest don't get the help they need in those precious few seconds at the beginning, you can actually get an alert saying, "Somebody nearby needs your help." You can go use your CPR training and save their life.
Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti joined the LA Unified School District and the LA Fire Department to announce LAFD's participation in PulsePoint, a free mobile app that notifies registered users when someone who is in a nearby public space has suffered cardiac arrest. The alert occurs at the same time the fire department is dispatched, allowing CPR-trained citizens to provide help until paramedics arrive.
Los Angeles Fire Department is excited to use modern technology and hands-only CPR training to assist us in achieving our primary mission of saving lives.
Fire Chief Ralph Tarazza said the department partnered with PulsePoint so that individuals can help paramedics save more lives. Officials will also be training LAUSD students in CPR.
Having you at the close by to where they are and getting CPR started and getting an AED deployed while those professionals are coming to back you up is critical to survivability.
Officials hope the new app will not only save lives, but build a community of emergency responders. I'm Yana K. for LA this week.
LAFD gets about 1,200 calls a day, 85% are medical emergencies. LAPD officers and a local plumbing company have gotten together for a day of service and an entire home renovation for a citizen in need. Anna Marcos has the story.
It looks like something from a TV episode of Home Improvement. Only in this case, it's LAPD cops and a local plumbing company, LRS Plumbing, helping out an elderly resident in South LA. Betty Epps was surviving winters without heating in her home, until Senior Lead Officer John Biondo discovered her plight and enlisted the help of LRS Plumbing.
I noticed when we went in the house, it was really, it was winter and it was really, really cold in the house. And so, we had a conversation with her about why it was cold, and she let us know that the heater wasn't functioning.
LRS Plumbing took care of the heating problems for free, but the heater kept breaking down. So now the company has donated a brand-new heating and air conditioning unit as part of its yearly Season of Giving campaign in the community.
We look for stories from the community or anywhere around that where people are in need.
But these guys are going the extra mile. They're putting in a new tankless water unit and taking out the old one. They're also adding a washer, a dryer, and a low-flow toilet. And boy, is Mrs. Epps surprised. What do you think it's going to be like with your new heating system, your new washer dryer, your new low-flow toilet?
They're going to put a toilet in?
They're putting a toilet in!
I didn't know that.
But wait, there's more. Betty Epps' home is getting the star treatment. Everywhere you look, there's drilling, sawing, cleaning, and raking, even roof sweeping on a very precarious roof.
Very easy for us to have a problem that somebody calls us about, and we go out and we work on that for two or three months to solve it for them. So at that point, they become, you know, our friends, our family, that kind of stuff, yeah.
We just give back, and there's no greater feeling to continue to give back.
It's awesome. I can't tell you how much I appreciate it and how grateful I am.
A good deed by local plumbers and cops working together to help someone in need. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
For more information on LRS Plumbing and its Season of Giving program, contact lrsplumbing.com. The neighborhoods surrounding Fox Studios in LA's West Side is experiencing a revival in public art. Gil Reyes shows us from Century City.
If you've walked or driven through Century City lately, you may have noticed them, new public artwork popping up next to luxury hotels and skyscrapers.
It adds so much to the community. I mean, here we've got shopping centers, people living, office buildings. But then you have art, and all of a sudden you stop and say, "That is beautiful."
That is a piece entitled "Goddow" by artist Brett Price, part of a public art renaissance on LA's West Side called Century City Sculpture. The year-long exhibition will feature the works of 10 nationally and internationally renowned artists. There will be 19 artworks such as these on display, each one with the ability to inspire conversation among passerbys on the street. At least, that's the goal. Public art didn't really exist on Avenue of the Stars and surrounding streets until 2012. That's when the first Century City Sculpture event was launched, decorating Hyatt Regency Century Plaza, Fox Plaza, and other local landmarks with curious outdoor displays such as these. Installations usually stay for a year or so, only to be replaced by new ones, continuously inspiring new thought, new conversation.
This is not a largely city-driven effort. Our office helped, but this is really created by the Century City Chamber of Commerce and a number of individual businesses.
This year's program will feature a walking tour with maps.
It's a mile, it will take you an hour. That's fantastic. And then you go and eat in the restaurant, go to the movies.
Expanding your options as well as your horizons in Century City. Gil Reyes for LA this week.
You can check out these abstract works on Santa Monica Boulevard, Constellation Boulevard, and Avenue of the Stars in Century City. Councilman Mike Bonin recently hosted an open house on Venice Boulevard to discuss the mayor's Great Streets Plan from Mar Vista, and it was a hands-on experience.
Photos of other public spaces, including this parklet with a swing or this bicycle parking corral, spark ideas and conversations. Folks even played around with their idea of how landscaping, traffic, and pedestrians should coexist on Venice Boulevard.
I generally feel safe on the bike lanes, but having them separated would be even nicer.
It would be nice if it was even more walkable, maybe wider sidewalks.
Across the street from the Mar Vista Farmers Market, Councilman Mike Bonin held an open house that asked residents, business owners, and those who work or visit the community to share ideas for improving Venice Boulevard, Mar Vista's main thoroughfare.
Mayor Garcetti and I are doing everything we can. We've been going door-to-door, holding these open houses to try to get as much community and neighborhood feedback on what people's dreams are here in Mar Vista for what a great street should be.
Venice Boulevard is just one of 15 streets throughout the city. San Pedro's Gaffey Street and Reseda Boulevard in Northridge are among them that are getting overhauled as part of the mayor's Great Streets Initiative, aimed at reimagining our streets to make them more attractive to residents, shoppers, and investors.
They'd like to see some outdoor dining. They'd like to see it safer for pedestrians, maybe some mid-block crosswalks, safer for cyclists.
The councilman says some improvements will happen right away, while other more permanent and labor-intensive changes will take more time to implement. But before any work is done, the city needs you to put pencil to paper and share your big dream for creating your idea of a great street.
Engineers are high in demand in Los Angeles, and city officials are hoping to attract more people to work in the field. And one way they're doing that is by showing the younger generation how much fun science and math can be. Yana K. reports.
It's saved! Yeah!
These LAUSD elementary students couldn't be more excited as their container with an egg inside landed without the egg breaking. It's all part of LA's Celebration of Engineers Week, which seeks to get more kids interested in the engineering field, and so far, it's paid off.
It's fun, um, being an engineer.
250 students took part in an egg drop contest at City Hall, hosted by Councilmember Gil Sadio, where they had to design a container that would protect an egg when dropped from high above. Some eggs didn't make it, but others did.
It made it survive by the Ziploc bag and the cotton balls by the bottom.
Some of the eggs, they descended really, really slow because they utilized the parachute effect. Other egg containers, they utilized a strong structural base. So when it did hit the ground, it actually absorbed most of the force. So we had several different designs, but overall, all the students did great, and they had fantastic egg containers.
Engineers Week featured all sorts of activities citywide for elementary and college students, introducing them to engineering while promoting science, math, and technology.
We jokingly refer to it as Geek Week because these are all the geeks of the classroom and of the families that they come from. And we want them to feel proud about that and pursue their goals.
Math and science is cool.
Meanwhile, the LEDWP held its own structure-building workshop where college students competed in a boat-building contest. City officials say these kinds of community outreach events help engage engineering students who may one day work for the city and fill a growing need.
There's a lot of work to do, and it'll take sharp young minds like we have here today to be involved in getting those problems solved.
And by the looks of things, the future appears to be brighter than ever. I'm Yana K. for LA this week.
Officials also hope that more women become interested and enter the engineering field. The city and its police officers reached contract agreement. The city attorney files suit against the company contracted to do building work for the LEDWP, and the city designates a popular dining hub, Japan Town. These stories and more in City Beat.
The city and the Police Protective League have announced they've reached a tentative agreement on a four-year contract for Los Angeles police officers. Part of the agreement includes a no-cost living adjustment for the 2014 and 2015 fiscal years, with increases starting in 2016 through 2018, the year this contract expires. The agreement also includes the equivalent of a 5% increase for healthcare subsidy and a substantial increase in cash overtime throughout the contract. In a joint statement, Mayor Garcetti, Council President Herb Wesson, and the Police Protective League called the contract "fair and responsible." The city council would still need to give final approval.
City Attorney Mike Fuhrer has announced his office is filing a major lawsuit against PricewaterhouseCoopers, which was hired by the city to manage the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power's customer billing system. But Fuhrer says what ended up happening is the company botched the job it was hired to do when the billing system launched 18 months ago and cost the city tens of millions of dollars in damages. LEDWP General Manager Marcy Edwards assures customers that they have corrected a majority of erroneous bills and continue to do so. Customers who still have questions or problems with their bills can call 1-800-DIAL-DWPP. Edwards says call wait times have also been reduced. LA has a little Tokyo, and now it's also got a Japan Town. Council members approved the renaming of Sawtelle in West LA with a 14 to 0 vote. The West Side neighborhood is home to many Japanese establishments, from banks to restaurants to flower shops. Prior to its official renaming, the area was also referred to as Little Osaka. The West LA Neighborhood Council says having an official designation will help West LA to become a more identifiable area like Brentwood and Mar Vista. The renaming of the area to Sawtelle Japan Town also helps bring awareness to the area's history, when a large concentration of Japanese-Americans moved to the city's West Side due to race-based restrictions on buying homes from the early 1900s to the 1950s.
Rocker George Harrison is honored with a new tree planted in his memory in Griffith Park. And as Gil Reyes reports, it replaces the original plant, which died in a strange twist worthy of a Beatles-esque ballad.
Griffith Park's councilman Tom Labange helps plant a new pine tree honoring former Beatle George Harrison. It replaces the original Harrison Memorial Tree destroyed by Beatles. Seriously, Beatles, as in the insects infested and devoured the original Canary Island pine tree last year. Breakfast with the Beatles radio show host Chris Carter recalls the witty headlines that followed referencing Harrison's songs and career.
USA Today, "Isn't it a pity Beatles kill George Harrison tree?" CBS, "Beatle invasion kills George's tree."
George Harrison's loved ones say he too would have appreciated the coincidence. The original tree was planted in 2002, soon after his death from lung cancer at the age of 58. At this year's replanting steps from the Griffith Observatory were close friend Paula Greenfield, sister-in-law Linda Arias, and older sister Louise Harrison. She's written a book about George Harrison and the Beatles entitled "My Kid Brother's Band."
I have loved him all his life, and I loved him long before he was rich and famous. In fact, I loved him before he even had any teeth. And I know that he would be very, very happy to know that although the one tree didn't survive, that we are now trying again to put something here in his memory.
In Griffith Park, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The new tree was planted on what would have been George Harrison's 72nd birthday. In this week's List of Things to Do and Exhibit by Women About Women during National Women's History Month, Seek La Via takes it to the Valley and an exhibit on jazz pioneer Duke Ellington.
March marks National Women's History Month, and here in the city, the Pico House Gallery is hosting the exhibit called "From Her," an exhibition by women about women. The exhibit is open every Tuesday to Sunday from 10 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. from now through Sunday, March 22nd. The artwork explores how women see themselves in relation to nature. The Pico House Gallery is located at the El Pueblo Historical Monument at 424 North Main Street. To see a sampling of some of the works on display, you can go to facebook.com/FromHerLA. The next car-free event, Seek La Via, is taking place in the Valley for the first time. It happens on Sunday, March 22nd, from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. Participants will be able to travel between North Hollywood and Studio City on car-free streets using foot, pedal, and non-motorized wheel power. The event will run along Lancashire Boulevard between the North Hollywood Metro Red Line stop at Chandler Boulevard and the Universal Studio Red Line stop, and along Ventura Boulevard between Campo de Cahuenga and Coldwater Canyon. The 5.5-mile route will highlight some of the gems of the East Valley, including the North Hollywood Arts District, Universal City, Studio City Farmers Market, and the famed Sportsman's Lodge. Go to seeklaVia.org. The exhibition "Love You Madly: A Portrait of Duke Ellington" will display archival recordings, concert posters, and original photographs related to jazz pioneer and prolific master composer Duke Ellington's life and career. The art show opened earlier this month and will remain open through June 6th at the William Grant Still Arts Center, located at 2520 Southwest View Street. Gallery hours are Tuesdays to Saturdays, noon to 5 p.m. The materials exhibited will chronicle Duke Ellington's rise to fame through swing in the Cotton Club and Big Band era as an inventive arranger and charismatic bandleader. Go to wgsac.wordpress.com for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
It's the start of a new season, and one Chinese festival reminds us of light and renewal. The Chinese American Museum held a Lantern Festival that lit up a recent March afternoon for many fairgoers. Anna Marcos takes us there.
You can always count on the lion dance to bring pageantry, fire, and excitement to any party. But it's the tiny lantern that's the star of this show. The 14th Annual Lantern Festival kicked off at the El Pueblo Historical Monument near the Chinese American Museum, with Chinese folk dancing, martial arts, and acrobatics of all sorts.
The great thing about the Lantern Festival is that it starts the beginning of spring.
And free springtime activities help kids of all ages express their inner creative child, from lantern-making to dragon drawing and more. But it was definitely the lion dance which drew the attention.
The dragons dance so, so awesome. They're awesome.
Oh, well, lions, dragons, it's easy to get the two mixed up. Though we did hear there was a majestic silver dragon dance at the end of the show. At any rate, these are the tame kinds of lions and dragons. Posing for pictures is allowed, as is shaking hands with and petting the animals. And as the Lantern Festival draws to a close, another springtime season is now in full bloom. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Award-winning paintings by children under the title "My Happiness" are also on exhibit at the Chinese American Museum as part of this year's Lantern Festival festivities. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook or at Twitter. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamerk-Park. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
... Mr. LeBonds' moves and Mr. Corret's seconds, and next?
Committed resolutions for approval.
Mr. O'Farrell moves and Mr. Bonin seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, say as Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, we're gonna ask Mr. Tom LeBonds... In fact, no, we're gonna ask, since it's St. Patrick's Day, Mr. Mitch O'Farrell to lead us, to lead us in our flag salute today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Madam Clerk, do we want to run through the agenda?
Mr. President, before we begin, there's a request for members to continue Item 15 to March 31st and Item 20 to April 1st.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items 1 through 23 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that the lien... That Items 2, 7, 9, and 14 may be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid. And Item 19 may be received and filed inasmuch as property ownership has changed.
Okay, so without objection on those items, that'll be the order. Do we have cards?
Mr. President, there, yes, there are cards on Items 1, 3, 6, 10, 11, and 21.
Okay, why don't we hold those items?
And 5, too, sorry.
Okay, and 5? Let's hold those items, and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open...
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's requests to continue Item 23 to March 31st.
Okay, who snuck that one in? Anyway, without objection, that'll be the order. So can I call for the vote now, Madam Clerk?
Yes, you can, Mr. President.
Thank you for your permission. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That brings us where?
Items 24 through 46 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, any specials? Members? I don't see any. Let's put... Mr. Bonin?
46 has two different committee reports, and I believe we're waiting for Mr. Kerkorian to come to make the...
Let's hold that. Let's hold 46. Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call 44 special.
Since he asked nicely, let's accommodate Mr. Corretts on Item 44. You met... You moved too slow, Mr. Weezer, but since you're my colleague, I will at least listen to your request.
Politely ask for number 45.
Okay, number 45. I'm in an extremely good mood today. Anyway, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, for Item... Item 24 should also be held. There's a communication from the mayor's office requesting to withdraw the...
Okay, now, before I call for the vote, do we want to check to make sure that nothing else? No notes, no cards, no whispers? Let's vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, that brings us where?
Items 47 through 51 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, I've been informed that Item 36 needs to go forth with... On Items 47 through 51, without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Parks?
We have a substitute motion circulating now for 49.
Okay, so let's hold 49 until that is circulated. Cards?
Cards on Items 47, 48, 49, 50, and 51.
Okay, so that locks all of those up, right?
Yes.
Let's go back to the beginning. Start out with Item Number 6, which is called Special by a Card. I believe this is Everett Miller. Please come forward, sir. Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Good morning. In this particular situation, a fee is being assessed against us as the property owner. We had a tenant that operated a business there, and the difficulty we have with this fee is that the tenant knew that the ordinance didn't have any real enforcement authority against him. He simply ignored it and moved out, leaving us to address the issue of having to pay the fee. He has relocated down the street, same business, same area, and he continues to operate down there. When he moved out, we sued him for an unlawful detainer because he'd not paid the rent. I have a judgment against him for $15,000 for non-payment of rent. We had the sheriff levy the judgment against his business operation down the street, but he's a knowledgeable tenant. He put the new business half in the name of his wife so that the sheriff would not levy the assessment against his business. The reason he did not pay the fee that was assessed to him is that he understood the ordinance had no enforcement authority against him, and he simply ignored it. I may not have any ability to avoid having to pay it, but I would request that you consider revisiting your ordinance so that you put in some collection authority, so that you can actually collect the fee from the people who incur it, so that they don't understand that there's no downside penalty to simply ignoring you and leaving it for the landlord to pick up the tab after he leaves. And that's my issue.
No, thank you, sir. Can we hold this item for a second? All right, we're gonna put this on hold for... You may want to hang around just for a few more minutes, sir.
Okay.
And so we'll move on to... Item 10, Mr. LeBonds.
The clerk, with your approval, to be excused. The Recreation of Parks Department has our annual St. Patrick's Day function, and Mr. Weezer, as junior deputy, asked me to represent him there, as well as the parade honoring our fire department. So if I could be excused, it's that you have a quorum at this time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Same to you. Okay, Item 10, Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy.
Top of the morning, lad. Happy St. Pat... I'm for this item. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Mr. Murphy, we're now going to Item 11, so you may want to come back for that one.
Yes, Item 11, I support.
Thank you again. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
We'll move to Item 5, that was held special by Adon Newman. Please come forward. Could we start her time? Reset her time? Yes?
Hi, I had an inspector come out to the house to evaluate a vehicle that ran just fine, but I was never notified of any fees from the inspector stating that there would be a fee charged for him coming out. He never mailed me any notification stating that I would be charged a fee and never posted anything on my property. I'm the owner of the property, the owner of the vehicle, and was never notified. A year later, I received a collection agency notice stating that they were collecting a fee for building and safety, so I contacted Building and Safety, talked to the dispute department. The dispute department stated that all items had been returned, unable to deliver, and of, you know, does not reside at this address. They had... They told me that they sent the items to a different address, a property that my mom had previously owned and sold, so I was never notified. When I talked to the dispute, she stated, well, talk to the inspector, notify them of this. She said she'd notify them of this, and I thought the item was handled. I did mail a similar information to the council, and hopefully everybody's received it.
Okay, maybe I will... Okay, maybe I will, Ms. Fuentes.
The item for two weeks, Mr. President, I appreciate it, so we can see if we can get to a solution.
Okay, so this item will be continued for two weeks, and further review will be done by the council office.
Can I be notified of who it is or what their name is?
Well, your councilperson is Mr. Fuentes.
So I just contact that?
His office, it will be talking with you. Madam Clerk, two weeks from now, that date would be?
March 31st.
So March 31st, Ms., March 31st, this item will be back on this agenda. So no action for two weeks. Thank you. Let's, on item 24, let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President, for item 24, a motion, a communication from the mayor's office requesting to withdraw the candidate has been circulated, a motion is required to receive and file that, if that's council's wish. Also, there are cards on this item.
Mr. Bonin.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hernandez is a constituent of mine and who can't meet the commitment to the meeting schedule, so in accordance with the mayor's letter, I'll move to receive and file item number 24 inasmuch as Mr. Hernandez has withdrawn his name from consideration.
Okay, and I'll second that. Mr. Murphy on 24.
Yes, item 24. I'm kind of against this item, thank you.
Okay, so without objection, we'll receive and file this item. Mr. Sadio, I saw your name on the board, I'm sorry.
I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Hernandez for his service. He's served a couple of commissions, but he has competing commissions. He's such a diligent and thoughtful public servant that he wanted to make sure that he could have put all his attention on the other assignment for the County of Los Angeles, and therefore has stepped down from this position.
Thank you, sir. Let's move now to. Okay, so item 47, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. Number 47, this is an exemption. Anytime I see the word exemption, I know somebody paid for the exemption. Exemption means, youngsters, you don't have to follow the rules. Exemption means that somebody gave these people money so they could do something to ruin our neighborhoods. And here, it concerns CEQA. In other words, they'll be allowed to pollute somebody's neighborhood because they paid off these people up here. And this concerns New High Street and Republic Street. And if you look, you'll find out that it's not, for non-motorized transportation, they're essentially giving the city's property away to private industry. And I just want you to know that in most countries in the world, I'd be shot dead for what I say here, but in America, I'm allowed to do that, in California.
Stay on the item. Okay.
Although he interrupts me.
Let's prepare to vote on this, you're disrupting the meeting. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, this ordinance, as long as, as well as item 25, the ordinances will be held for one week for a second reading.
I understand. We're now gonna go to 48, Mr. Walsh, item 48. Mr. Walsh passes on item 48. Let us open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Why, is there a glitch? Item 51, Mr. Walsh, item 51.
The only reason I'm up here is because of the State Brown Act. You wouldn't listen to me if it weren't for that.
Stay on.
Final maps in the various council districts. Shh. Okay, what a final map is, is, it means that there are maps down there that give, that zone. You may live in an area where they could build a high-rise right next to you and destroy your neighborhood. You don't know it unless you see the final maps. And the city engineers report, well, the city engineers, this is a corrupt organization that takes its orders from the people up here. That's, okay, bonds, agreements, contracts, this is a final map for Mitchell Torino Street. This is an area, I've thought many, many times, at Mitchell Torino Elementary School, and this is a residential neighborhood, but what's happening here is, they want to get rid of blacks and Hispanics, so they can move rich white people into the neighborhoods who will pay much higher rents, so what they will, and buy. So what they're doing is changing the maps so that they can destroy the homes and apartments of blacks and Hispanics and build big high-rises for white people. If you don't believe me, take a look at, take a look at Echo Park, a lot whiter than it used to be. Take a look at Silver Lake, a lot whiter, because the ultimate goal is to get rid of all blacks and Hispanics in this city. HollywoodHighlands.org, and they're in on it. Everyone up here is an all-white jury.
Let's prepare to vote on that, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now we'll move on to item 1. Called special by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes Donna Pierman. And Mr. Herman. Item 1.
Actually, I took one to be all of the ones that are over here where the liens are, so I'm just gonna say something really general, that they excuse all the big thing, people with, rich people when they have large fines, and they work with them every which way, but person has a small little fine that they have problem, and they don't work well with them, and the money, the blood and sweat comes on the small, poor people, and there's a lot of poor white people, by the way. So I'm against items like this. Thank you.
I do not see Mr. Herman. All right, let's prepare to, to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Herman, you want to speak on this item? Mr. Herman, do you want to speak on this item, AKA Langhorn? Obviously not then, so we will vote on this, we will open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Do we have Blanca? Do you please pronounce your last name for me?
Caddillo.
No applause?
Caddillo.
Go right ahead.
Yes, I'm here to represent my mother and my father regarding this property. There's a lien trying, going to be imposed for an unpaid fine. This fine supposedly dates back to Jan, to April of 2005. The notices were delivered to my parents' primary address, but in 10 years, we haven't received notice of a fine being imposed to begin with. And say it was 10 years ago, they missed it for whatever reason, it's been 10 years, and just now, we're getting notified that there's unpaid fees. I just don't find this correct. I need to see proof that there was, they tried to notify us, my parents. I haven't seen any of that, and so, they were always very good about getting rid of everything or anything, notices that they received on the rental properties, taking care of the business, but we haven't seen any of this, so I would just like to have this either removed or cleared up, or just give me additional information. We didn't have any additional information as to exactly why the fine was imposed to begin with, and then that there has been an attempt to collect. I haven't seen anything, so I would like to see this.
Okay, this is what we'll do on this item, since the representative from the area's not here, why don't I continue this for two weeks, which, Madam Clerk, will be the 31st?
Yes, March 31st.
So.
Is it possible to try and do this over the phone? I did call the number and spoke to the person referenced on the letter that I could contact. They told me they would have an inspector contact me, and no one ever did.
Okay, well, let's try this. I'm gonna continue it, but one of the gentlemen that you can chat with is here today. If, Charles, if you would speak with her, and so this will be continued, so they, you don't have to worry about the fine, and hopefully a conversation between you and him will work this out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Herman, AKA, I can't make out the card. I cannot, well, first of all, I can only read what I can understand, all right? So now you can speak to this item.
Any of you here on a lien, specifically on item number 3, as you heard the protests and the contemptuous action of the city not to allow you to ask for a receipt, you need a receipt so that the lien doesn't get assessed against your property in the future to come, let alone to defer you and have you come back in two weeks or in a month later, what good is that? Listen, people, you need to ask your councilpersons here who are involved on your lien, they're illegal, none of you were notified by certified mail, and this is ridiculous. How many times have you caused more insult to the public, you unreasonable fools? So get on the ball, help these people out, resolve the issue, give them a receipt so that they know that this action of testimony has been resolved and not come back later, Mr. Speaker, and I hold my time to one minute as Robin Hood.
Okay, so let's move on. Mr. Weezer, did?
Standby, Mr. Weezer, standby.
Do you have one of the items special? Are you ready? What item was that? 45?
Yes, we could do that real quick, Mr. President.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, and item number 45, I just want to bring this to my colleagues' attention and the public's attention, which is an item that is providing funding to a civil engineering associate 2 position dedicated to the processing of sidewalk dining R permit citywide. Currently, as we are looking to make downtown LA more walkable, we found that it took months, if not over a year, to get an out, a sidewalk dining permit. Through this effort, it would be a lot quicker and cheaper, and I point this out because as we're moving to prioritize people as much as we do cars throughout the city, it's important that we change processes like this so that our own bureaucracy does not inhibit us from making our streets and sidewalks more walkable. So this is a step in the right direction to make outside dining, the permits that are available for people to want to open up their businesses and get outside dining. It's a lot cheaper and easier now through the funding of this one position, and the conversation for this actually started during our budget process, so I want to thank everyone who, when we submitted this during the budget process for the funding of this, we worked something out with the mayor's office to make this possible, so thank you to the mayor's office as well. I ask for an aye vote.
Okay, on this item, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, we'll move to 49, Mr. Parks, I believe it's been circulated, I do have, maybe we should go on and take the public comment cards. So I'll call on Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman, AKA Hood, please come forward. Mr. Wa, no applause, Mr. Walsh, you have one minute.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is number 49. You're amending it, so, of course, we don't have a copy of that, which is a violation of the Brown Act, but you violate the state law all the time. But this concerns a property on Menlo Avenue for housing purposes and a ground lease with a community build. These are poverty pimps who claim that they are poor, poor people, and in fact, they are just getting money from the city, and in fact, when a private industry builds a unit, it costs about one-third as much as when the government builds a housing unit. The other, the extra money is, of course, for corruption, but then they could get back into your campaign funds so everybody's happy. HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, before I go to the next speaker, community bill is one of the most highly-respected nonprofit organizations in the city of Los Angeles. Go right ahead, Mr. Herman Hood, or wherever, whatever you're calling yourself on this day.
Good afternoon, residents of Los Angeles. In regards to the motion by Mr. Parks in Bloomfield, who's not in his seat today, regarding housing purposes and a long-term ground lease with option to purchase public land, public housing, such an insult of abuse and fraud throughout the city of Los Angeles, as you read here, there's no community impact statement submitted, what does it tell you that they're hiding from the public? As earlier, you heard me talk about the liens, but that's a different subject, Mr. City Attorney. Now, as Robin Hood, I generally ask for the services and housing be audited every quarter or three months to you, Mr. City Attorney, to communicate what the investment for the community development of housing located at numbers 623 and 8707 South Maleno Avenue for housing purposes, the same way you didn't provide housing for people who are veterans of the city of Los Angeles, for people who are disabled in the city of Los.
Would you please keep your voice down?
Mr. Speaker, Robin Hood has many voices, as you see, and I.
Robin Hood better stay on the subject.
Speak on the subject of city property located at 8707 South Maleno, M-E-A-L-I-N-O. ...speak on the subject of city property located at 8707 South Maleno, M-E-A-L-I-N-O, Avenue. So, don't take my criticizing...
No, just speak to the subject.
Because the action of the city is never in benefit of the public, right, Mr. Felipe Fuentes? So we're all a part of the big problem. Provide affordable housing and keep to the standards of giving people housing that is actual affordable.
Your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. This substitute motion merely changes some technical language, changes some dates, and I think it's important for those who are listening, is that this development will end up with 60 units of housing, particularly for supportive housing for homeless veterans, transition age youth, and small families with integrated employment, education, and social services, plus garden project. And so, it's something that's needed. Community Bill owns the four lots adjoining this parking lot, so they would be most eligible to not only seek funds to build this, but also be in a better position to bring this project to conclusion.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, you informed me that we need to take two votes on this item. If you could walk the public through what we're doing.
Yes, Mr. President, first, council should vote on whether to substitute.
So that's our first vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now the second vote.
Yes, Mr. President, this vote is on the motion itself.
Okay, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That motion passes. Mr. Weezer, it's my understanding on item six, you wanted to continue that for two weeks, so that will put it on the March 31st agenda, correct? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, so that will be the order. We now have item seventeen. I have cards on that item. I've got Mr. Murphy and Mr. Sanchez. Please come forward.
Yes, I am seventeen. I support.
Mr. Sanchez, we bumped into each other out, outside a little earlier today. Go right ahead, sir.
Well, you know, I would like to get this citation to the original invoice, because I didn't get a certified letter on this. I'm not tening out the property and I would like to get it reduced, or at least give me some time to pay for it.
Okay, so what we're gonna do with this item right now is if you would go to this side, my right side, there'll be someone by the ropes to have a conversation with you. Mr. Parks, do you want to like continue this for a week, or it's my understanding... So can we, you want to just do that? And you have a gentleman with a folder?
Yeah, we'll continue it.
Okay, so for one week, that'll bring us where, Madam Clerk?
To March 24th.
Okay, that, Mr. Sanchez, that item will be continued to next week, the 24th. Yes?
Could I have thirteen reconsidered? The owner of the property is here and they need to work out some issues with building and safety.
Okay, before we do that, is this an... Okay, well, we'll take care of the item now. So we continue the one. Now, let's vote on reconsideration of item thirteen. Let's open, well, it was thirteen, right?
Yes.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is now before us. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. The San Fernando Valley and the Second Council District is blessed to be the home of one of the finest schools in all of Southern California, the Oakwood School. And I'm pleased to be able to introduce seventh and eighth graders who are here visiting us from Oakwood, who are here in the first two rows, along with their teacher, teachers Matt Fagan and Casey Ahern. It's a pleasure to be able to welcome them to the city council.
Stand up, guys. Stand up. Stand up and look at yourselves on television. Wave at the camera. Welcome to City Hall. Move on to item, Mr. Buscaino.
If I may, for Mr. Engler, we, his staff requested to reconsider item four, if we may, and then we would have to continue for two weeks.
Let's vote on reconsideration on item four. We'll do that for you, Doug, even though you have on jeans. Anyway, let us, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we wanted Mr. Buscaino to continue this how long?
Two weeks, sir.
So March 31st. Item fifty? Does Mr. Walsh have any more time? Okay, so then I have Mr., I have Ms. Peirman, followed by Mr. Herman, AKA Hood. Ms. Peirman?
I was gonna, I'm lucky, I reread it, I looked at it again. It's about a donation. It's good that Hollywood is donating it so it doesn't have to come to taxpayers' money and it doesn't have to come from LAPD, so I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see Mr. Herman or Mr. Hood. Let's prepare to vote. No, first of all, first of all, don't holler. When I call your name, come to the podium. If I don't see you, then you're gonna forfeit your time. Now, if you want to speak, come on and speak.
Would you please assess my time?
No, that's because you, no, you just, you just go on this.
Now, as a member of Mr. Earl Farrell and Mr. LaBonde, relative to accepting the donations by the Hollywood Property Owners Alliance and the Central Hollywood Coalition of Upgraded Digital Surveillance Systems, this would have been the most dandy thing to help Africa. However, and incidentally, the city is accepting the donation by the Hollywood Property Owners Alliance and Central Hollywood Coalition for the upgrade digital surveillance systems. It would be nice if all our officers in the city of Los Angeles had digital surveillance cameras on them, so we know that none of us are...
Mr. President, he should be speaking to the council.
Speaking to the microphone.
Sorry, sir. I am speaking into the mic now.
And stay on the item.
Okay. May I start? May I start? Well, you rudely interrupted me earlier, but okay, let me go back.
No, I only interrupt you when you're not on point, so now go ahead.
Los Angeles Police Department, LAPD, for the Hollywood Entertainment District and the Sunset Vine District, as further described in the text of motion. It would be delightful if we all had surveillance, so that we're all protected by our First Amendment rights, without the transgression and the offenses of those who hinder us by their adverse action, to suppress us to the racist demand of surveillance. So as Robin Hood says to all of you in Hollywood, hooty-hoo! Stay tuned, public comment, HollywoodHighland.org, Mr.?
Thank you. Thank you. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, well, I've been informed on item thirteen, we're gonna continue that till March 31st. It's already been... Mr. Corret, you held item forty-four.
Do we have staff from GSD that can answer a couple of questions?
I, they're on their way right now.
Okay.
Mr. Fuentes?
Consider item number eight, so we can subsequently ask for a two-week extension. I hear Mr. Parks also say number one.
And why don't, why don't we deal with this issue? And then we'll take care of the other two issues.
This item is a report regarding the potential savings of energy efficiency retrofits at city facilities. And it's, it's a great thing, very important, especially with the rapidly worsening drought. And we all know that we're on the front lines of climate change and need to respond. But I have a couple of extra questions. Are we retrofitting the convention center and looking at things like solar panels on the roof of the convention center? Any chance of that happening?
As it relates to the convention center, you would have to check with them, because we have, GSD does not maintain the facility for the convention center, but we can work with you to find the information for you.
And there's nobody here right now that can answer the question?
No, sir.
How about the airport? Are you helping to retrofit the airport?
There, as the convention center is a total different area, but we can work with you to get information from the airport concerning what they're doing. But the particular port we have is basically a city control, buildings is basically under general services.
And lastly, your proposed work plan is very ambitious and you get a lot of important stuff done on a $5 million budget, but since we actually wind up with our savings over time, making an essence of profit, but at least saving by, by energy efficiencies, would you be able to do more if this budget was increased? Would you be capable of implementing a $10 million or $20 million budget if, if the council went in that direction?
If additional funding was provided, we would need also to talk with WEP, because one area that we would have to accelerate is having our ETAP audits completed faster. And also, there will be probably some additional staff, but what we can do is report back to you what it would take to implement a program for $10 million.
Well, maybe we can have a discussion of that through the budget process.
Sure, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Since this is a program that more than pays for itself and helps us deal with global warming, if there's a way for us to borrow money and expand the program, I think that would be a real positive for the city. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I have two items where there's a request that they be reconsidered and continued. It's item number one, per Mr. Parks, item number eight, per Mr. Fuentes. So if we could vote on reconsideration for both of those items right now, if we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Okay, the request is that both of these items be continued to March 31st. So that'll be the order. Mr. Bonin, are you ready on, I think it was item forty-six?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Kukorian also had an item on this one as well, though. He had an amending motion to make, I believe. In the meantime, though, I'll vamp a little bit. This item, colleagues, deals with one of the more frustrating problems that our constituents have. In last year's budget, we increased the number of miles that were being resurfaced in the city of Los Angeles. We did not make a commensurate gain in the amount of funding and resources and equipment for the Department of Transportation to pave or to restripe the streets. So we often have streets that are resurfaced and then don't get restriped for a bit of time. We're hoping that'll be fixed in next year's budget, but in the meantime, both the Transportation Committee and Budget and Finance Committee took some steps to remedy this even more quickly, and the report before us allocates some additional money to help make that happen, including some additional equipment and resources. There's a difference between the Transportation Committee and the Budget and Finance Committee report. We did even more work on it in Budget and Finance, so I'll move the Budget and Finance Committee report, and I believe Mr. Kukorian has some additional amendments.
Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I want to thank Mr. Bonin for his leadership on this issue in the Transportation Committee. This has obviously been a source of great frustration for every single one of us and for our constituents. When people wait patiently, sometimes for years, for their street to be resurfaced or slurry sealed, and then when it's finally done, they have to wait for sometimes very significant amounts of time before that street is restriped. It's especially frustrating, and it has been especially frustrating for me in my district, when that happens around a school and a crosswalk is eliminated and limit lines are eliminated. Or in a major boulevard, when the lane lines are not repainted and people have to sort of drive through that street at high rates of speed, sometimes trying to figure out where their car is supposed to be without the benefit of lane lines. It's a threat to public safety, and I'm glad to say that the departments have been working better together to resolve that, but one of the backlogs has been an insufficient number of crews and insufficient amount of infrastructure and the infrastructure, of capital equipment, the trucks and other vehicles that are necessary to do this. What we do have is aging, and we don't have enough in the first place. So Mr. Bonin and his work in the Transportation Committee and also through Budget and Finance Committee were working on solutions. I would like to second Mr., I thank Mr. Bonin for his motion, moving the Budget and Finance Committee report. I'd second that and ask that we move that forward. And then, in the coming budget, I want to emphasize the need to increase the number of crews to be able to staff the equipment that we're advancing today.
Thank you. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you. I too want to stand and just recognize the leadership, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Kukorian, in moving this forward. You know, we have a council here, colleagues, that seeks to efficiencies and how we run the shitty government. And I too have experienced numerous calls and frustrations from constituents after we pave a street, and yet, it takes weeks to restripe, if not months. So I want to acknowledge and celebrate the fact that we are moving forward on this critical issue that gets our heads spinning. And I want to thank both Mr. Bonin and Mr. Kukorian for moving this. And we're gonna do more as we enter the budget season and budget talks and creating more efficiencies, and this is, again, one, one, one effort, critical effort in, in moving our traffic patterns along and also being responsive to our constituents. So thank you very much for this and will heartily support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy B., Mr. Bonin to close?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to rise and say one more thing about this issue, and I wanted to commend the frontline city employees who work for the Department of Transportation and provide this service. One of the things we're doing today is we're buying some more equipment for them or authorizing the purchase of more equipment. These guys bust their humps every day with equipment that has been falling apart and failing. I was out with a crew a few months ago, and the, the hand liner they use to stripe the crosswalks, the heater in it was broken, because we don't actually paint the streets. We actually apply a heated form of plastic of sorts to the streets, and the heater had broken. So instead of giving up that day, one of them actually pulled out a blowtorch and heated it up with that. I mean, we have city employees who work hard every day and want to make sure they can do the best work for our constituents, and I just want to acknowledge them on this.
And that's great. Kudos to our folk here. Okay, let's, Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the clarification of the record, we're moving the Budget and Finance Committee report, but there are additional recommendations... report, but there are additional recommendations of the Transportation Committee that the Budget and Finance Committee concurred with that may not be reflected in the report. So we really should move the Budget and Finance Committee report and amend it to incorporate all of the recommendations of the Transportation Committee as well.
Okay.
If that's... Okay.
All right, so let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, I think that brings us to public comment, general public comment. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, please come forward, followed by Ms. Pierman.
Top of the morning, Mr. President. Welcome back from your recess. We need to keep our streets cleaned. I'm glad Mr. Kukorian's reelected. I hope he does a wonderful job in the next four, this four-year term. Carolyn Ramsey for City Council Four. There's one Irish pub I want to tell you about. Don't go to the Irish pub on Burbank and Woodman. They charge you $10 to get in. That's not right. And I hope the Better Business Bureau is listening to me.
Okay. Do we have a... Mr. Herman, it just says Herman, so I'll call you. Followed by a Chris Bondurat. If you would come after this gentleman, a Leonard Wayne.
I personally disagree with Ms. Ramsey, Caroline versus David Rue, because, again, this is Tom LeBonds' second-hand person, kind of like a favor for a favor. Hold my tail and I'll pull yours, to you donkeys. So I say to you, for the seat runoff for Tom LeBonds, go against Caroline, all of you. Let's make a point. They want us on the amendments, they want us on their reelection for another year and a half. Let's show them that we, the taxpayers, are capable of doing better and more. And then, in note, why are we paying LAPD officer who was smuggling a woman across the border in the news in the city of Los Angeles and paying him for administrative off-duty time? Stop paying people for the crimes they commit until the investigation is over. In the same manner, fine your missing LAP officer from El Monte.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So Donna, you have to move, Mr. Herman. Again disrupting the meeting.
I heard there's a new bill that Speaker Assembly is putting out to have a, to want to have a restate fee to, that's whenever anybody refi finances their home, that will be go for low and mid, middle-income people, and it's going to be paid by the tax, by the homeowners. I'm against that. And it's very important that we get rid of that. It's very important for the Jews, for the U.S., that Israel votes for Netanyahu and Israel, not Obama's party, the Labor. Using, oh yeah, you want to use the Treasury, use the taxpayers' money to cut, to oust Netanyahu, in my opinion. And that's not, Obama is not good for the U.S., it's not good for Israel. It's, he's a war criminal. He's, Netanyahu stands up to Iran, and he's for good for Israel.
Thank you, thank you. Your time has expired. Please come forward, sir, and identify yourself, and I'm still looking for it. Leonard, Leonard Wayne. I got you. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, good morning. The Honorable Mayor Garcetti, Honorable Herb J. Weston, and council members, I think this is on a different subject, and we do have documents for you. My mother asked me to appear on her behalf to read this to you very quickly. The letter is entitled "To Thank You." Dear sirs and madams, we write to express my sincere thanks and appreciation for your gracious resolution of the above- referenced case, bringing this matter to a favorable conclusion on my behalf. As you may recall, my son and I appeared before the council on several occasions to oppose the improperly lodged liens lodged by the Department of Building and Safety against my home, happily and by the grace of God and through the considerate efforts of the council, Council President Herb J. Weston Jr., his offices and staff, principally Mr. Darren Williams and Jordan Baruchum, and with the cooperation and assistance of Mr. Raymond Chan and Mr. Frank Bush of the Department of Building and Safety, the matter of the improper liens has been favorably addressed. We thank you. There is, however, one remaining issue, the sidewalk conflict repair.
Okay, I'll have somebody from my office chat with you. Justin, could you chat with this gentleman if you go to the right? Over there. Thank you, and we're glad to be of service. Okay, there he is. Yes, sir.
I am Leonard Wayne. I drove here today from Huntington Beach because of this great man right here, Richard Bacallion. This is an actor that did more for Hollywood than a lot of you know. Anthony Quinn got him into the business, working as a car hop. This is a real stand-up man. And when I heard you guys were going to recognize him today, I said, wow, that's class. I got to be there, I got to be a part of this. We don't have a lot of stand-up men in this world anymore. And Dicky B. was a brilliant man, because he shared two things, and I want you guys to hear this. Never let yesterday take up too much of today, because today's a present. So open it slowly and savor it, and you'll find happiness. Most importantly, Dicky had a famous tag. It was "Shoo, shoo, shoo." You might remember that when he played Dinky the Bird. So I thank you guys for recognizing my good pal, Richard Bacallion. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, if I could now have, you're disrupting. If we could have Mr. Walsh. And is it Julius? And I'm having to challenge Julius with the last name beginning with an M. Julius, okay, you're next up.
John Walton, HollywoodHighlands.org. Can't believe an LAPD cop, they opened up the trunk of his car. He's hiding an illegal alien in there. From now on, all LAPD officers must have cars with clear plastic trunks, because we can see how many Mexicans they're smuggling across into America. Da Vinci Fire, unsolved arson. Da Vinci Fire, unsolved arson, but until it gets solved, the owner doesn't get any of the insurance. Community Build, you make a big deal? You corrected me on Community Build? Okay, correct me on this. The mayor's gay lover, Mr. Glenn Dake, has not filled in an FPCC file. The mayor has a gay lover. If it's wrong, the way I said something wrong about Community Build, correct me now. You're not, because everyone knows he has an illegal gay lover. Mayor Glenn Dake, Eric Garcetti. Correct me.
No applause, no applause. Julius? Yes, sir.
First, I'd like to apologize, because I couldn't take the pledge of allegiance, because America committed treason against me. I'm not surprised that some people on the council didn't want me to wear my Samurai sword, because L.A. is a city without honor. How can you not let veterans have air conditioning? How can you allow that to exist, where veterans can be denied air conditioning? A lot of people on the council are going to jail someday. You know, I'm living in public housing right now, because I'm being blacklisted. I'm the greatest genius of all time, that's not debatable. Even the Republican pigs have to admit it, and they think I'm more dangerous than ISIS. But they're trying to make me commit suicide by harassing me insanely. I got the physical evidence to prove it, and the housing authority won't do anything to stop it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That is the... That concludes general public comment. Mr. Marine, you didn't submit your card prior to the beginning of public comment. So with that said, general public comment is closed. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's requests to send items thirty and forty-nine forthwith.
Without objection?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred?
That clears the desk.
Okay, announcements, members? Let's all rise for adjourning motions. Well, we have an announcement from Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm very proud to announce that this Sunday, March 22nd, Ciclavia will be coming to the San Fernando Valley for the very first time.
Congratulations.
And it'll go from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so everybody should plan their schedules accordingly. Lancashire will be closed between Chandler and Universal City. The area around Universal City Red Line Station will also be closed. And then Ventura Boulevard between Coldwater and the Universal Red Line Station will also be closed. There will be limited crossings there. Maps are available at the Ciclavia website, but it will be a great day, a great morning and afternoon, where people can come out and enjoy some of the best that the San Fernando Valley has to offer on bike, on foot, on skateboard, or however they want to come, as long as it's not by car. So I hope everybody will come out to enjoy Ciclavia from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. this Sunday.
I agree with you, Mr. Kukorian. It will be a great day. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. As everyone knows, today is St. Patrick's Day. It's also the number-two day of the year where there is heavy drinking across the country and across the city. So as you enjoy the festivities this evening, drink responsibly, get a designated driver. There will be cops on the road. Look out, drive safely, enjoy yourselves safely, and enjoy the St. Patrick's Day. And a little blessing, may your blessings outnumber the shamrocks that grow, and may trouble avoid you wherever you go. And let's hope that holds true tonight as well. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Coretts?
No, I just have an adjournment, so I'm ahead of myself.
Any other announcements? Okay, we'll go, if everyone could please rise for adjourning motions, we'll go to Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of a dysfunctional hero of my youth. I was a big Angel and Dodger fan, both, because they both played in Chavez Ravine. And as an Angel fan, although it's 1970, it seems like it was yesterday, where Alex Johnson won the batting title 45 years ago, 1970, on the last day of the year, he beat out Carl Yaskimsky by a fraction of an at-bat. And the Angels and the Red Sox had also battled most of the way through that season before the Angels missed winning that championship. He was at least as well-known, other than winning the Angels-only batting champion, their championship in their history, for his emotional and mental illness. He was a difficult player on that team. I remember Clyde Wright pulling up a chair to defend himself in the clubhouse, and Chico Ruiz coming armed to games and actually having to pull a gun on him in that same year outside the stadium. And he ultimately had a landmark case where they treated his mental illness after an arbitration, where they found that mental illness was as serious as physical illness, and as they would treat an injury, they needed to provide psychiatric treatment for him. So I'm not sure the Angels will ever have another batting champion. I hope they someday will, but certainly, he was a great player and a difficult personality who we all learned a lot from as a result.
Other, Mr. Parks?
Thank you. Best, we adjourn in memory of Louise Baumann, who passed away March 13th of this year at the age of 83. She, her parents, Louise, I'm sorry, she was born, she was the youngest child born to Edward Murray and Janie Murray. Her older brothers, Edward Murray and also Cecil Murray, enjoyed having a baby sister at home. Her father, Edward Murray Sr., was a local high school principal, whose passion for learning and education influenced Louise and her brothers. However, Louise was not just gifted in the classroom, but she excelled as a dancer, cheerleader, and a star basketball player. Always ahead of the pack, she graduated from industrial high school at the age of 16, was attracted to the historical Black colleges, Bethune-Cookman University. She gave the gift of education to thousands of children over the years, from Everglades of Florida to West Palm Beach. She included those who were typically excluded and specialized in education of children who were intellectually challenged. Louise Murray migrated to Los Angeles in 1957 and lived with her aunt and uncle. Always the trailblazer, she was seeking to learn and advance herself. She became one of the first and few African-Americans at that time accepted into the University of Southern California, where she received her master's degree. In 1977, the Murray family imprinted a solid footprint into the Los Angeles community with her brother Cecil, his wife Bernadine, their son Drew, and her niece Tammy at First AME Church, where they shared a ministry that endured for 27 years. During that time, Louise was a missionary director of the food pantry, served on numerous committees and outreach ministries. Though she never carried the title of Reverend, she was a minister in her own right in serving thousands of people each year. She survived by her brothers Edward, Cecil, and a host of family members. Funeral services would be held Friday, March 20th, 11:00 a.m. at First AME Church, 2270 Harvard at Boulevard.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Vernon Watkins, a California labor leader and civil rights activist who organized major campaigns aimed at public employees. He died Thursday in an Upland Hospital. He was 76. Mr. Watkins lived in Rancho Cucamonga, was California Area Director for the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees for two decades, starting in the early '70s. He later served as a top national official for the union in Washington, D.C. As California Director, he was the architect of a campaign to unionize thousands of non-teaching UC employees, including custodians, clerks, researchers, and hospital aides. The university fought the 1983 Union election, one of the largest in modern times, for four years. Watkins also played a role, key role, in a battle for pay equity for nearly 4,000 L.A. city workers, most of them women. In 1985, the Los Angeles City Council agreed to raise the salaries of 3,900 women holding such traditional low-paying jobs as librarian, secretary, and clerk. The contract brought the women's pay in line with that of men in jobs with similar skills, such as gardeners, drivers, and maintenance workers. The agreement was only one of a few, was only one of a few of its type in the country at the time, and the first broker through collective bargaining instead of costly litigation or a strike. Vernon Watkins was born in Detroit in May 26, 1938. After earning a bachelor's degree from Wayne State University, he became one of the first Black linotype operators in the Graphic Arts International Union. He married his high school sweetheart, Marion, in 1956. By the early '60s, he was a, he was living in a segregated Detroit neighborhood and struggled to support a growing family on his modest wages from a printing plant. In 1963, inspired by Black labor leaders, he drove all night to the nation's capital to participate in the massive rally they helped organize, the historic March on Washington. The only one thing in my mind in those days, Watkins later told the L.A. Times, was that jobs, was the way we were treated because of the color of our skin, and how I was going to keep providing for my family. Here in River Martin King, stirring I Have a Dream speech with its calls for racial equity and brotherhood, prodded Watkins to join the leadership of his local printers' union. By the end of the '60s, he was back in Washington, D.C. as an organizer for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. In 1972, he moved to Los Angeles, became the union's California Director, and became a close ally of then-Mayor Tom Bradley and other prominent Democrats, including feature, future, House Speaker Nancy Pelosi. He also served on the Democratic National Committee for many years. In 1992, he became executive assistant to William Lucy, the union's international secretary treasurer, and he remained in that post until retiring in 2010. Besides his... Besides his wife and son, he leaves three daughters, Celeste, Michelle, and Angelica, a sister, Louise Hamilton, ten grandchildren, and five great-great-grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
And Mr. Price, I'd like to be, I'd like to sign that one with you. I know him, I know one of his daughters. Uh, I think Mr. Sadio wants to speak on this.
Yes.
Go right ahead, sir.
Vernon Watkins was a giant in the labor movement, dignified, intelligent, and very affable. He was a friend and a mentor. You'll, you'll agree with this, he was a cool guy.
Very.
He was a cool guy, and, uh, and he was a great man. I had, uh, the real honor and, and the pleasure of sitting with his family Sunday night, uh, his son, his daughters, and then many of his grandchildren. Sat with Bill Lucy, talking about some of the great campaigns that, that, um, uh, Council Member Price just mentioned, uh, the March on Washington, uh, the organizing in Memphis. Uh, this was all before many labor laws were established, uh, before California had its, um, Myers-Mylius-Brown Act. And it was difficult for them to take the initiative to give, uh, this sense of dignity and respect to, uh, the working men and women, particularly those who work in the public sector. Uh, there's a lot of lore about, uh, organizing and the history of organizing in this country, but mostly a few, uh, noticed around the private sector. But AFSCME with SCIU have forged a place, uh, with other union leaders in this, uh, nation to ensure that working men and women in the public sector are also treated with dignity and respect. And he was one of the stalwarts of AFSCME. And, uh, I just remember him so fondly. You remember me when I was a young union leader. He was a mentor for me, as many of the great leaders of AFSCME were, uh, while I was working over at SCIU Local 660, and I always appreciated, uh, their support of my efforts. Great friend, great mentor, and a great union leader.
Cool guy, like you said, so I, uh, to the clerk, if we could have signatures of Mr. Price, Sadio, and myself on that one. Um, anyone else on this? Uh, Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President. On February 27th, uh, Los Angeles and America, uh, lost a man who had left a great legacy both to our culture, uh, and, uh, to our country. He was a veteran of the United States Air Force, and also one of the people who enriched all of us through his work in film and television. Richard Bacallion passed away on February 27th in Elmira, New York, uh, at the age of 84. He was born in 1931 in Watertown, Massachusetts, lived the immigrant experience. He was, uh, the son of an Armenian immigrant father and a Canadian immigrant mother, uh, who lived in Watertown, uh, Massachusetts until, uh, he went to serve in the Air Force, proudly serving during the Korean War. Uh, he, after the war, he came to Los Angeles, and like so many others after their wartime service, uh, made his way here, uh, in our great city. And he made his way in an extraordinary way. He became known throughout the country, uh, for his roles in countless films and television shows. Uh, made his career mostly as a, as a tough guy, but despite being a tough guy in the films and in television shows, he was one of the warmest people you could imagine in real life. And that's why I'm surrounded by so many of his friends who were friends of his for decades. Uh, and, uh, among the other, uh, among his many performances, um, was, uh, he was in 50 movies, including Chinatown, um, and over 300 TV shows. Uh, he appeared in The Delinquents, The Bonnie Parker Story, Up Periscope, uh, those are some of his tough guy kinda roles, and then he shifted into more family and, and fun roles. And many of you may be old enough to, to remember, uh, The Computer War Tennis Shoes, uh, The Strongest Man in the World, Return from Witch Mountain, uh, and other Disney films that he appeared in. He was a close friend of the Sinatra family, Frank Sinatra and the Sinatra family. Appeared in many, uh, Frank Sinatra films throughout the 60s, uh, and, uh, also appeared in Pressure Point in 1962, where he became, uh, best friends with Bobby Darin, and later became a regular on Bobby Darin's TV show. Uh, he was in television for over 50 years, uh, with roles in shows like The Life and Legend of Wyatt Earp, The Many Loves of Dobie Gillis, with our now-supervisor Sheila Kuehl, um, Hawaiian Eye, The Untouchables, Batman, Kojak, The Bionic Woman, Charlie's Angels, Hill Street Blues, Cold Case, and My Name is Earl. So it's a rich body of work, and he's one of those people that are representative of so many in Hollywood. You don't know his name. You might not have heard of the name Richard Bacallion before today, but you know his work, and you've seen his work again and again, uh, in countless films and televisions. He's survived by his brother William, who could not be with us today, um, he's, uh, back east, um, but he's also survived by an extended family, many, many friends. The, the folks who are with me today are essentially his Los Angeles family, and he's survived by many people who have enjoyed his work and have been enriched by his work in film and television. Um, and so I'd ask that the City Council of Los Angeles adjourn in honor of Richard Bacallion.
It's our pleasure to do so, sir. Miss, I'm gonna go to the left side. Mr. Fuentes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to adjourn today's session for two, uh, fantastic Angelenos. Uh, it's with sadness that we adjourn today's council meeting in the honor of June Dale Call. June was born in Nebraska at the age of 18. She met her husband Joe Harp. They married, had children. Pamela Kay in Forest Montgomery. Pamela joins us today with her husband Jack. The, uh, the family eventually moved to Venice Beach, California, and then relocated to Santa Barbara and opened up two very successful state street restaurants. But then adventure took their hearts, and then they moved to Anchorage, Alaska, um, in 1953. After two years, June decided to move back to California with her children. She settled again in Venice Beach, California, went back to school to complete her bachelor's degree while working as a car hop at a drive-in on Lincoln Boulevard. Eventually, she applied for a manager's position at IHOP, and over the years, she was promoted and traveled from San Diego to Santa Barbara as the Copper Penny Southern California Regional Director. In June of 1957, June met Paul Call, and they married in 1960. Paul and June settled in Sherman Oaks, California, and they had a lot of happiness until, uh, Paul's, uh, passing in 1968. After his passing, June went back to work as a regional director for IHOP, and after having tired of traveling so much, she eventually, uh, went to work for one of their largest franchise operations. In her last years of life, June lived very comfortably in Mission Hills with her daughter and her son-in-law, um, and she was very, very active in the community. It's no wonder why there's so much activism in Mission Hills, because we had great people like June. During her time in Mission Hills, she worked as a volunteer, uh, in the community for organizations like the Mission Hills Combined Neighborhood Watch Group, the Mission Hills Neighborhood Council. And for more than a decade, she dedicated her time as a volunteer at the Friends of the Mid Valley Library, where she spent countless hours helping run and manage and mentoring so many young minds and, and spirits in, um, the San Fernando Valley. June would have been 98 years young this August 2015. She had a well-lived, uh, very exciting life, full of purpose, love, and joy, and she will clearly be missed. And if I could add, it was particularly helpful to me during my recent loss of our patriarch in the family, because Pamela and I shared a lot of conversations about how important it is to, to have a meaningful life, because her mother June and my uncle Ismael did that for us here in Los Angeles. So I'd like to adjourn in her very tremendous memory. Colleagues, I also have, uh, another one that I'd like to present to you all today. It's with sadness that we also, uh, uh, adjourn in the memory of Denise Fitzgerald. Denise was born in 1930, I'm sorry, in, on March 30th of 1960 in Glendale, California. She graduated from, uh, Hoover High School in 1978, later attended Cal State Northridge, uh, graduating in 1994 with a bachelor's degree in child development, and eventually earned her teaching credential. She knew early on that she wanted to be an educator, where she did that for over 20 years. In 1991, she met and married Kevin Fitzgerald, and they got married at the, what we affectionately know as Touchdown Church, the Lutheran Church of the foothills in La Cañada, and they began their life together. Denise's dream of becoming a mother, uh, and a wife was realized in 1998 with the birth of their daughter Alexa, and again with the birth of their second daughter Megan. The girls were a real inspiration to her, where she began to volunteer most of her time in all of the efforts that they were involved in. So, uh, Denise was involved with the PTA, where she not just was a member, but served as book chair fair and president. Uh, when the girls would matriculate to, uh, Mount Gleason Middle School, she served on that board. When the girls began to get active in the Girl Scouts, she became a real leader there, and she did so much while her girls were growing up. In 2011, when, uh, Megan and Alexa joined the Jobs Daughter Organization, she again jumped in and became a, a real advocate for that organization. She unfortunately began to fight a long battle with breast cancer, and her first victory, uh, against cancer was in 2003. Uh, but her cancer returned again in 2012, and she fought it with courage, uh, but unfortunately succumbed to cancer. Um, she left this world on February 27th, 2015, surrounded by her family and friends. She leaves this world, obviously a better place for her children, and is a great example to all of the parents out there in our community, and I'd like to adjourn in her memory as well.
Um, Mr. Buscagino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in, in memory of Robert Lee Tushen, who passed away last March, um, last week, March 13th. A loving father, grandfather, husband and friend, survived by his children Stacy and Michael, daughter-in-law Merrill, and son-in-law Edward, and grandchildren Jessica and Jordan. The funeral was held this last Sunday at Mount Sinai Memorial Park in Simi Valley. I had an opportunity yesterday to spend time with the family. Just a community of faith came together for, um, Mr. Tushen, well-loved in the community. May he rest in peace. And lastly, um, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Vincenza Camello, um, who passed away on February 27th, born in Italy, migrated to San Pedro in 1958. She was part of the Italian Catholic Federation Anderson Memorial Senior Citizens Club in the San Pedro community. Her passions were family, traveling, and cooking. She is preceded in death by her husband Giovanni and grandson Joshua Perosi, and survived by her children Mary, John, Frank, Anthony, and brother, brothers Ciro, Fernando, and sister Liliana, all whom live in Italy. She is, um, survived by her grandkids Mary Ann, Jerry, Enzalina, Nancy, Stephanie, Joseph, Johnny, and Christopher. May Vincenza Camello rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin, did you have?
I can hold mine for tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, with that said, uh, this, uh, meeting is adjourned.